Meeting in the session. Mr. Lynn Sutton will be serving as our Sergeant of Arms tonight. As this is a legislative body, Williamson County would ask that you please, if you have any pagers or cellphones, please turn those off or have them on silence in honor of the fact that this is a legislative session of your county commission tonight. The proper time tonight as we open the meeting, we'll have our invocation led by Commissioner Tommy Little, and then after that, the pledge to the flag by Commissioner Bain. If you will stand, please.
Let's pray. Our Father...
We ask you tonight that you will bless this body, bless the nation and our leaders, give us the wisdom that we need in our deliberations, bless the many women overseas who are protecting our freedoms. We ask you many blessings in the name of Christ, amen.
Pledge the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please see it, please. If you would, for roll call, if you would press your white button, the present button for roll call, please. All roll, please. So I know that Commissioner Wilson and Williams are out of town and Commissioner Chalfont is home recuperating, so I want to wish him well. Next item, we have twenty, twenty-two, twenty-one present, three absent. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Commissioner Lynch? For a second?
Wait a minute. Excuse me. I'd like to make two corrections. One of them, we have Clyde Lynch is not the person that made the motion to approve the members of the Budget Committee. The second one is on the resolutions that said in there, I said you could hire those fourteen teachers for a hundred thousand dollars. I never said that. I said there's a hundred thousand dollars more being requested than it takes to hire fourteen teachers.
So if we could make those two corrections of the minutes, that's the regular set. The regular meeting, September 11th, is your reference, the September 11th term accord. Any other corrections? Attorney Bobby? Mr. Cook?
Can each one of you add a list of corrections that our office has recommend be made to the minutes? The, I'm sure you guys are looking at it and realizing that you guys usually don't get these lists. Recently, well, before September, there was a process where the minutes would be corrected or looked over by different officers and grammar mistakes and spelling mistakes were made and then sent out to you all. After certain events, that process has no longer been followed. The rules actually are very broad, so I am going to propose to you all another process. And the process that we are proposing is that the Clerk's Office will draft the minutes within ten working days, as your rules state. They will come to our office, along with all of you. Our office will review them and each one of you will review them. If there are revisions made, we suggest that they go through our office so we can compile them and then present you with the list every month, should it at least be needed at that Are there any questions as to the specific changes, revisions?
Any questions? Commissioner Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, if I may, and just glancing over this, I don't know how this new revision took place, if you sat down and watched the tape and corrected it that way, I don't know. But, oh, number three, no, I'm sorry, number five, and just because that involves me, jumped out. It says, "After the sentence included the following: Commissioner Hancock made a motion, seconded by Commissioner Cook, to elect Commissioner Walton by acclamation." I believe that was Commissioner Lynch that made this.
Okay.
So just looking over it, I don't agree with this.
Okay, well, usually there are several commissioners that will second one. The tape had several of them made.
Okay.
You know, unless someone is specifically pointed out by the chairman, you know, it's best it's just a guest job.
I understand. It's not critical.
But we can make that change if you want to make a...
And it's fine, but I'm just questioning the process.
Any other questions? See none, I'll entertain a motion. We revise the minutes as addressed here in this memorandum, as well as Mr. Lynch's two changes on those two sections of the minutes. Is there a second motion made and seconded? That we approve the proposed revisions to the minutes. Other discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it approved unanimous. Citizens' Communication, excuse me, Introduction and Acceptance of the Highway Commission Minutes. You receive these, one more set of minutes, don't we? Jump ahead. Special Call Meeting, September the 11th. Special Call Meeting, September the 18th, County Commission. These were all sent out to you in the mail as well. Any corrections or additions to these minutes?
Move for approval.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the Special Committee Meeting, Special Commission Meeting on September the 18th, 2006. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Citizens' Communication, this is a section of our agenda that we allow citizens to address the commission, the first sign up. I'm wanting to get to these citizens' communications, aren't I? Highway Commission Meeting Minutes, Introduction and Acceptance of Highway Commission Minutes, these were sent to you in the mail. I entertain a motion to accept these. Motion made and seconded that these be approved. Discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Move on now to Communications and Messages. I'm there. First sign up is from Jack Vickery. Jack, if you would come, give us your name and address for the record and then address the commission, please, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jack Vickery. I live at 232 Lighthouse Terrace in Sullivan Farms area. I am the Vice Chair of the Library Board of Trustees. I would like to thank all those people that were involved in securing an alternate site, Rogers, Judy Hayes, Bob Barnwell, Cherry Jackson, and Mary Harry. We, about two years ago, we held a town meeting in Thompson Station and we had received a lot of encouragement from the patrons in that area. Several of the people that were there had multiple library cards, and some of them were Spring Hill, some were Brentwood, some were, of course, Williamson County, and also National Public. And at the time, we had, there's approximately fifty-four-hundred-and-ninety-eight patrons that are represented in that Thompson Station and Spring Hill Williamson County side of that particular area. This site, we feel, will be an excellent site for the type of library we want to put into that area. We expect it to be somewhat of a regional-type library that will encompass what we call Williamson South. We hope to be able to serve the patrons of that area and give them the service that they require. We find that library patrons don't like to drive too far, and this is an excellent site. I've looked at both sites, the original site and this site, and I think it's a much better location for a library. It gives us a lot of surrounding area and room to, you know, have plenty of parking and do things with the community. We'd like to have you seriously consider this location for the southern part of Williamson County, and we thank you very much for your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jim Monser?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things that I neglected to do when I put my name on the list was to include Bob Iannicone as part of this comment that we'd like to make. What I'm here to speak about is actually a collaboration between Biomedic Therapeutics, the Cool Springs Life Sciences Center, and Williamson Works, and I apologize for the oversight. I wonder if he could be added to the list to talk, to make a comment.
I'll let you speak, and then the commission will decide. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. So I'm here, a number of you, well, all of you, if you have not received already, you will receive in the next couple of days, an invitation to an open house at the Cool Springs Life Sciences Center. Many of you may have heard about the Life Sciences Center, but really not have a feel for what the Life Sciences Center is all about and what we're trying to accomplish at the Life Sciences Center. The Life Sciences Center is a collaboration between Biomedic Therapeutics, Nobel Gene Development, Williamson County, Williamson Works, Vanderbilt University, and a number of interest groups within Middle Tennessee. And what we would like to do is invite you to this open house, and I'm here to do that personally, as well as what you're going to receive in the mail. At that open house, we'll have some food and refreshments, and we'd like to give you an overview of what life sciences are all about, what we are trying to accomplish at the Cool Springs Life Sciences Center, some of the things that life sciences, some of the impact that life sciences companies have on a region, economic impact, educational collaboration and development of sciences cluster within the area, and then give you a tour of the life sciences in a biomedic therapeutic space, which is an example of a life sciences company. As I mentioned, it's really very key to the collaboration that we have with Knowledge Quest Institute, which is also resident in the Life Sciences Center, and I really would like, would appreciate the opportunity to have Bob speak a little bit about that, if you could do that.
Thanks, sir. Our rules require that this individual be signed up before the start of the meeting, so you've heard the request from Mr. Monser. Is any objection to hearing from Mr. Bob Iannicone under Citizens' Communication for you tonight? Any objection? I see none. Mr. Iannicone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. First, I urge you to please attend and have supper with us that evening. I think you will enjoy a short program before your county commission meeting. The interesting part is that you'll get an opportunity to see the support that you provided us in putting together a beautiful education training center, about 2,500 square feet, that you will enjoy supper in, and we will also discuss briefly some of the groups that are using that facility now. You'll also hear from people like Dr. Leslie Lynch, who is working with the school systems, both public and private, in trying to develop career options for high school children, as well as elementary and middle school, in the areas of science, engineering, and technology. They have hired their first intern from the public school system in Williamson County and working out dramatically, and it'd be exciting for you to hear this. We're also, obviously, putting programs together for middle college students that want careers in health care, and we have to develop further health care workers within our community so that we can keep our wonderful health care industry within Williamson County. And that's the gist of the program, and I'll be giving you an overview of that aspect, and we hope that all of you will be able to attend that function in November. Thank you.
Give us the date and time.
That is November 13th, if I'm right, and that would begin at, we can start arriving at 5:00, we'll start precisely at 5:30.
Where?
At the Cool Springs Life Sciences Center, 389 Nickel Mill Lane in Cool Springs, Franklin, and that's right behind Academy Sports off of Mary Lane. And we'll be sending, through the invitation, we'll be sending instructions, invitations to the facility as well.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commission.
Under Communications and Messages, we'd like to thank the, all the folks who provided the staff for the UT Ag Extension Department and staff for providing dinner for the commission tonight, and certainly was enjoyed by those of us that remembered it. Some of us didn't, but we would encourage you to thank Dwayne and his staff and all the staff there for preparing that meal for us. Any other communications and messages? We have no late filed resolutions that we know of, so those are all in tow. We'll now go to Report of County Offices. County Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, I'll let David do the financial side first.
Mr. Chairman, at your desk, you have the monthly budget report from the County General and the school system for the month of August. Of course, it's just two months into the year, but everything appears to be on schedule there, no areas that stick out of any particular problems, so we'll continue to provide you those each month as we go along and be able to track the budget process. Also, at your desk tonight was the September Privilege Tax Report, and it continues to be very strong, and looks like we're going to have another good year on privilege tax. Also in your packet, we have two months of the report from the Cool Springs Marriott Conference Center. In July, we experienced our first negative month all of last year, and then we came back strong in August, and they've given us assurance that that's the only negative month that they see on the horizon, that things are doing very well, so we'll keep you posted on that. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Any questions of Mr. Coleman? I see none. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I've just got three quick items. I know you all got a full agenda. On your desk, you should have two brochures that we've ordered. Linda's ordered these for you. One of them's called Growing Pains, Physical Challenges for Local Governments. This is a TASSER report that comes out of the state of Tennessee, and it particularly highlights the areas that several of you have asked me questions about, about the new Publix, Public Act of, that's being referred to as 953, and how it relates to the privilege tax and adequate facilities tax, and in your, in your off time, you might want to enjoy reading. It's a very good publication. The other one is a publication on Equalizing Education Funding, the Average Tax Approach that's being put out, and you should have another one dealing with the growth issues here in Williamson County, is one of the counties that they've highlighted, and as you go through that, you will note and notice the challenges that we face as we go down through the rest of this year and a couple of years down. Second item I'd like to point out is that recently, through the Greater National Regional Council, often referred to as the GNRC, the county won several awards, and I'd like to highlight those awards for you because all of these individuals are here in the audience. First of all, the Parks and Recs, through Doug Hood's oversight, was able to capture two awards. One of the awards, particularly, many of you are aware of, the renovation of the old BGA gymnasium area. You appropriated $350,000, and they received a grant of $200,000 to turn that facility into an award-winning facility that's being used by an awful lot of people. Second part of the award that Doug won through his department was working collaboration with Spring Hill and working out through the Spring Hill Recreation Facility that all of you have voted on, and we are in the process, those bids have gone out. Second award was Solid Waste Award with Carolyn Gallagher, Joanne Jackson, and Louis Bumpus, under his direction, for the programs that they use in recycling and promoting and preventing litter and promoting the recycling process, and that was a very nice award he received. The Economic Development Award was shared between the Economic Development in Franklin and Williamson County and their efforts in working and, and working in securing, working with the state of Tennessee in securing Nissan. And the final award that was picked up was the Waste and Water, Waste Water Services, the Storm Water Board, that about a year and a half ago, a committee was put together, and this board took about a year to get it all worked out, and those are all the programs that were received over the last year that got noted at this particular event. So I would ask you, when you see these different individuals, Floyd Heflin from, from our Engineering Department upstairs in Joe Horn's area, Economic Development, Solid Waste, and Parks and Rec, that you thank these men and women. The other item that I'll bring to your attention tonight, and David touched on it, is that our privilege tax numbers are holding up real good through the first two months. We were awful little in the county, but we were solid in the cities, the municipalities. In fact, Spring Hill went up $65,000, and we're basing that on the dollar per square foot that each one of you know that we receive for the heating and cooling, but the market for Williamson County continues to hold very strong and very steady. It does offer some challenges that, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, after the superintendent makes her presentation, I would like to come back up and offer some suggestions for our November county commission meeting, if you would not object to that.
Be fine.
Thank you. That concludes my report. Let's hear some questions.
Any questions of Mayor Anderson? See none? Dr. Sharber?
Before I get started, I wanted to pass something out that we will use when Mayor Anderson comes back up here. Then I'll talk to you for a minute, and we'll talk to you about this. What we're passing around is just a copy of our five-year plan, which was adopted by you, as well as us, back in January and February of last year, but we kind of assumed you wouldn't just carry that around with you every time you came to a county commission meeting, so it might not look as familiar to you because it's in black and white, and I think the one you have is kind of colorful. But we do want to talk to you and reference that when Mayor Anderson comes back up. But before we do that, I just wanted to mention a few things. One more time, I just would like to say publicly, congratulations to Brentwood Middle School for receiving a National Blue Ribbon Award, and we did have Senator Bryson and Representative Cassidy and Representative Sargent, and a representative from Congressman Blackburn's office out at Brentwood Middle School last week presenting proclamations, and they will, the principal and a teacher from the school will be attending an award ceremony in Washington, DC in November to actually receive that award. But of course, we're very proud, and that makes our second National Blue Ribbon School. The other one was Grassland Middle School, who received the award a couple of years ago. I don't know if you have had an opportunity to sign up yourselves for our new communication tool in Williamson County schools called InFocus. We were, for several years, printing a publication called The Courier and sending that out in the Tennessee, and we decided to do something a little more digital, and it's called InFocus. It comes out every other Thursday with articles about the school system, and also sometimes has some videos on it, and if you want to sign up for it yourselves, because we're encouraging community members, as well as parents, to sign up for this, you just go on our website and you'll see a place to sign up for InFocus, and it'll just come right to your email, and you can look and see what's going on all the time in Williamson County schools. And if you were able to read my FYI, last week, you know that we began our round of teacher feature presentations last week, and we will be going ten times during the school year and surprising usually three different teachers across the district who have been nominated by a student or a parent, and then those teachers are chosen and we go out and surprise them and film them, and if, whenever you get to watch Channel 3, you probably may have seen some of these on Channel 3, and we can't honor all the great teachers we have, but it is a great way to honor a few of them. I think the letters are always very touching, and Publix is a partner with us on this, donating bouquets of flowers. Cool Springs Galleria Donates a gift certificate, and this year, Sylvan Learning Center has joined in the partnership by offering the school a $100 award to the school where the teacher's been selected. So it's really kind of a neat way to honor at least some of our teachers. And you should have received an invitation to the groundbreaking ceremony for Nolansville Elementary School on October 22nd, which is a Sunday at 2:00 in the afternoon. We hope as many of you as possibly can will come. And the status of the two new elementary schools is good, coming out of the ground, going well. We do anticipate having children in those buildings next fall. And before we talk about the last thing, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions of Director Sharber? Commissioner Lynch?
If we push these schools through that, and we have to sell bonds in December, that's the worst month you can sell bonds. Can't we make some other reservations beside that?
Well, we are concerned about running out of money to pay our bills, and we had really thought we would have the money earlier than this, but we've been able to keep pushing it and pushing it and pushing it. We have a backup plan if we must wait till January, but we met with Mr. Coleman and Mayor Anderson this afternoon, and they felt like if we could do, sell these bonds early in December, we'd be okay. But Mayor Anderson, why don't you come help me with this, since this is part of what we were going to talk about?
Regardless of when we sell them in December, that's a bad month.
Mr. Chairman, if I could address this, Dr. Sharber and I and David and Leslie met this afternoon, and we were informed last week that the school system is going to need the money to complete the Longview, draw a blank there, the Longview School and the Nolansville School. We were hoping to wait till after the first of the year to do the bond issuance, and Mr. Lynch is exactly right, the month of December, after about the 15th to the 20th, is not the best time to be issuing bonds to have full participation that you would like to have throughout the nation. So what is being passed out to you now is kind of a date relative to the bond issuance, and if I could, Mr. Chairman, allow David Coleman to come up here and kind of take you through the bond processes as he has dealt with these, with our bond council. As you know, it's your job, we're not going to tell you that this is the only way, but we're, Dr. Sharber has presented us with an issue here that actually would go before the school board in, not next Monday night, but the following Monday night on the 23rd, and their meeting next week is postponed for one week because of the fall break. So we looked at this, and we said, well, here's another way to do it, and we, we are laying this out for you. It takes no action tonight on your part, but just try to give you a heads up of what we're faced with, and so if David would come up and kind of take us down through that, Mr. Mayor and I would appreciate it. David?
Mr. Coleman?
Mr. Chairman, anytime we look at doing a bond issue, of course, we're only looking at projects that this body has already passed intent to funds for before we include them in a bond resolution. The two projects that you did approve as intent to funds in September was the completion of the Longview and Nolansville, and roughly, in round figures, around 25 million. Then you have some projects that are before you tonight, and we'll have to wait and see what the outcome on those are. And then there are some projects from the schools and possibly from County General that will come in the month of November. You don't meet in the month of December, so to get on a timeframe to have our bond resolution passed in November, we would take these various projects from September and from tonight, and then the ones that are presented in November, and we'll schedule those intent fund resolutions at the first part of your appropriations in the meeting. And then the final thing on the appropriations in November would be the bond issue, the bond resolution, and we will list all those projects in that resolution so that at any point during tonight's meeting or the November meeting, if you turn down one of the intent to fund resolutions... meeting or the November meeting, if you turn down one of the intent to fund resolutions, all we have to do when we get to the bond resolution is to amend that out. But it's much easier to go ahead and include them, get the verbiage there, get the dollars, and then if there are changes, we can adopt that and amend those out at that time. Mr. Lynch is right, December is not the very best time to sell bonds. We have done it in the past, but in talking with our bond counsel and our financial advisor, Mr. Cruz, they feel like if we can time this, as you see in this sequence of events here, to have the sale around the first to second week in December, sometime before the 15th, that that would be acceptable. And then we could have the closing either late December or the first of January, and the funds would be available that are necessary to complete these two schools. As Mayor Anderson said, this is not the only approach we could take. We could split this and do part of the bonds now and part in the spring. A couple of reasons for putting them together at this time. Number one, the size of the issue. If we have two, let's say approximately $25 million issues at separate times, number one, your fixed costs are going to be a little higher than if you did it all in one issue. And number two, if you put those together and you're roughly $50 million, you're going to attract more players in the market to bid on those bonds and hopefully get a better interest rate. So that's our thinking. Like I say, it's not the only plan, but it's something we wanted to at least touch base with you tonight, and let you be looking at it. If you have any questions, we'll try to answer.
How many basis points, Norm, are we talking about in December, early versus late?
Commissioner, that's really a hard question to ask.
Yeah, I know, but is there a ballpark that as you get on into November, it's 10% higher or whatever?
Again, it's hard to say. It's kind of like this room, if we divided this room, half the room might be saying, hey, we really want to buy some before the end of the calendar year, and the other half might say, no, we don't want to buy anything until after January the first. So it just depends what players are looking at that time. The main thing in December, just to be truthful, is the holidays. If you go much later than the first or second week in December, everybody gets in that holiday mode, and they're just not looking at facing something big like that. So that kind of hurts you at that time. But with this timetable, we think we'd be all right.
Mr. Chairman, if I could follow back up and ask Becky to, Dr. Sharber to come up and kind of give you a ballpoint, just a snapshot of what's going to be coming in November for school building programs. And she was very elegant this afternoon in laying that out for us based on the numbers that she had. So if you would allow her that opportunity to do that, I'd appreciate it.
Just a minute. Let me go to Commissioner Hancock.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I had a question for Mr. Coleman. In this process, did we do any, give any consideration to bond anticipation notes for just the bridge funding that would be needed to carry us over into the first quarter of Bond anticipation notes as some instrument of like?
We certainly could do that, Commissioner. With the size of these projects, we would probably be looking to go out in the market to do that. And I don't know that you'd have a great advantage over going ahead and just preparing the bonds. Now, you've been around long enough, you know in the past, on some smaller items, we would borrow the money from ourself and kind of bridge that until we get to the bond issue. But on the size of these, that'd be very difficult.
How much, how many actual dollars, how many actual dollars are we looking at before, say, first month of the first quarter, end of the first month of the first quarter?
Dollars needed for the school system?
Dollars needed.
We're looking at roughly 25 million on those two projects, and Leslie can certainly come forward. But my understanding, in order to get those schools open in the fall, the majority of the construction work would have to take place between January and May.
So the short answer is 25 million?
Yes.
John, you all approved, as you know, in September last month, you all approved this.
Right.
It's just a matter of when they need the money to get the projects open. Dr. Sharber was indicating to us, you know, if they don't get these schools up and going in January, then you won't get the one in Nolansville open, nor will you get the one in, at Longview.
I understand, and I was just wanting to know if there was any kind of instrument that we could continue to go forward with without actually having to sell those bonds.
Let's also get into, before we get the cart in front of the horse, I learned when I returned to town this afternoon at 4:00, that there's a significant additional request that will be included with this if, in fact, we approve this to go forward. So before we get too far along on process, let's learn what we're being asked to do tonight, because this is news to, I think, everybody in the room but Mayor Anderson and David Coleman. So let's hear from the director of schools to address what we're really talking about tonight. Dr. Sharber?
Well, and we're not asking, none of us are asking you to approve anything tonight in this regard. I mean, what's on your agenda is what you're being asked to approve tonight. We're just trying to prepare you more for what might happen in November. So I just want to make sure you understand, we're not asking for people to approve anything tonight. And Commissioner Hancock, we'll go back. I understand what you're saying, because our concern was paying bills.
Right.
Through a certain period of time until we had the major amount of money. You know, paying bills to me might be $2,000 here, $4,000 there, or it might be 15 million here. I don't know what that number is. And I can go back with Ms. Holman, and we'll look at that, because perhaps there is some way to tide us over, so to speak, that we didn't have that conversation this afternoon. So thank you for mentioning that. It may not be dual, but we'll go back and look at that for sure, and I'm sorry we didn't think about that ourselves as well. And it may not be possible, and that might be why we didn't even discuss it. If you'll, on your five-year plan, you can see that in 2006, 2007, we had planned to ask for money for a new middle school in the Spring Hill Thompson Station area, and money for design and land for another middle school. We had also planned to ask for the funding for the maintenance technology building. And I do understand when we bring these five-year plans to you and you approve them, it is not a commitment on your part, but just to let you know that we had planned to do this. We originally had planned to make those requests in the spring. But we became aware that the county would prefer not to issue, probably not to issue bonds now, and then bonds again in the spring, thinking if you combine all that, you'll get a better rate on the bonds. So we have presented to the board in their work session a resolution to ask for funding, not for this exact funding, but for funding for the land and design fees for two middle schools, and possibly land for a future high school, thinking we might find land, enough land, to put a middle and high school together on the same property. We don't know that that will happen, but we think that that would be a good idea. We know right now, with the numbers we're looking at, trying to work on the zoning for Longview, that by 2011, if you only had children living in Spring Hill and Independence High School, it would be over full. That's 2011, five years from now. Right now, Spring Hill children attend Independence, Winstead children are zoned there, and Oakview children are zoned there. So we know now that we're going to need another high school in that general area somewhere. I'm not saying necessarily in Spring Hill, but somewhere from the furthest south end of the county to Franklin. So if we're going to go ahead and look for middle school property, we thought it might be wise to look for a piece that might be large enough to hold a middle and a high school. So we are looking at approximately a $10 million request for that. And then we also are asking at least the board to pass a resolution asking for $4 million for the maintenance technology building that has been in our five-year plan for at least five years. We have just continued to move it forward all the time because we haven't been able to get it funded. About five or six years ago, it was going to cost us 1.2 million. So the longer we put it out, the more expensive it seems to get. But those were the things, those are the things we're presenting to the board on October 23rd for their approval. We wanted to go ahead and make you aware of those, because if you follow this particular timeline, in November, these would come to you at your November meeting as an intent to fund. And if you go ahead and sell the bonds, you would be asked to go ahead and approve that, and then approve that in the bonding as well. So we're not trying to surprise anybody. We're just trying to stay up with what the funding needs, how the funding needs to happen for everyone.
Questions of Director Sharber? Anything else, Mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mayor, did I hear you say that there would also be some additional county projects that we might see in November that could also be added to this?
It's, Mr. Ford, there is a good possibility of that. Draw a blank. We have submitted out the Spring Hill recreation facility that we are doing. We believe that those numbers will come in higher than what we thought, and you all will have to look at those numbers. I know that it has been pitched or been presented to the Parks and Recreation Committee, whoever's chair of that may be able to address it. Were you on there, Lou? Ms. Cook was. That the project that was set aside for $8 million with what they're wanting and what we're asking, that probably not going to be able to get that project based on the $8 million. So you're going to have to make a decision on what we need to be offering for the area based on as the bids come in. Now, we may be premature, but based on what we're seeing, as you saw last month in the school side, there's a very good possibility they're not going to come in at what we want.
Other questions of Mayor Anderson? I see none. Thank you, sir. Hospital report, you've received this report in the mail. Mr. Miller is out of town and has given each of you this information, so I hope that's sufficient, but he is out of town and not here with us tonight. Any other committee that's listed wishing to report at this time? Anybody wishing to report on any of these items that are listed here? I don't see a button pushed. There we go. Commissioner Barnwell?
I just, members of Human Resources Committee, we will be meeting next Monday night at 5:30 here in the conference room. You should have that on your desk tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anything else? See nothing else in the committee area. Moving along to elections and appointments, municipal solid waste board, six-year term expiring, 10-12, Tom Murdock, nomination, Tom Murdock. Motion made and seconded to approve Mr. Tom Murdock as a nomination. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. County commission appointment under hospital board of trustees. Mr. Miller tells me that the committee is continuing to meet within the visuals, and there is not a recommendation to be brought forth tonight. So there will be nomination at a future date for that hospital board of trustees vacancy. Notaries, you've received the notaries and the handout of material that went out in the packet. I'll entertain a motion. Motion made and seconded. Commissioner Lynch?
I'll have to declare a conflict on this notice. I will abstain.
Thank you, sir. Other discussion on the notaries? Thank you, Commissioner Lynch. I see none. All in favor of the notaries as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous approval of the notaries. Consent agenda, there is none. There is no unfinished business. No zoning. Moving on to appropriations, resolution 1006-1, resolution appropriating $217,000, $217,880, extended care reserve in the 2006, 2007 general purpose school fund for extended contract payments to teachers. Commissioner Mills?
Approval.
Motion's made and seconded. Let's get the committee reports, please. School board was 12, 4, 0 against. Education committee?
6, 5, 0 against.
Thank you. 6, 4, 0 against. The budget committee?
Budget committee recommends approval, 5, 4, 0 against.
Good, thank you, sir. Commissioner Mills, explanation, please.
Okay, the school system has received their allotment for extended contract program from the state, and it is in excess of the amount allocated for the budget during 2006, 2007. And if you notice that there are no local funds necessary for this, it's extended contracts.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? Commissioner Mills on this resolution? I see none. Motion is made and seconded. On the floor, it's on the board force, resolution 1006-1 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed or no button? Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
21 yes.
21 yes, 0 no. Motion is unanimously adopted. Resolution 1006-2, resolution appropriating $42,000, $45, federal and state adult education funds for stipends and other non-personnel expenses. Commissioner Mills?
Move for approval.
Sir's second. Motion made and seconded. School board report is 12, yes, 0, no. Education committee?
6, 5, 0, no.
Thank you. Budget committee?
Recommend approval, 5, 4, 0 against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Mills?
This one is appropriating $42,000, $45 from federal and state adult education funds, and this is for stipends. And although we have to do a 5% county match, it's included in kind through telephone usage and copies and occupancy. There is a need for paraffin professionals and for teachers for this.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Greer?
I have a question about this program. It says it's for immigrants. I wonder if those are legal immigrants?
Director Schwab, would you like to address it, please?
We've been instructed that by federal law, we can, in the education process, we cannot ask that question.
I see. Well, in that case, I think this program encourages and rewards illegal immigration. Illegal immigration's costing this country billions of dollars. The federal government refuses to address the issue. We at the county level can refuse to be a party to this massive giveaway by not accepting this grant to entice illegal immigrants to Williamson County. While this program is 95% funded by federal and state funds, Williamson County taxpayers are still paying for it with federal, state, and county taxes. My constituents oppose having their money used to benefit illegal aliens. And I would request that each of you consider that when you vote on this resolution.
Thank you, ma'am. Other questions? Comments on resolution 1062? I see none. 1062 is up for consideration. It's on the machine. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed or no button? Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
19 yes, 2 no.
19 yes, 2 no. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 1063, 1006-3, resolution appropriating $472,228 for unappropriated fund balance for library books and reference materials for Ravenwood and Independence High School. Commissioner Mills, please.
Move for approval.
Motion made and seconded. School board report, 12, yes, 0, no. Education committee? Motion made and seconded. School Board report, 12, yes, 0, no. Education Committee? Commissioner Mills?
6, 0.
Thank you. 6, 0. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee recommends approval of 5, 4, 0 against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Mills?
As you know, Ravenwood and Independence High Schools are our newest high school. And as you also know that we are accredited by SACS, as it's called. And when they came in, they found that these two schools were insufficient in libraries, books. And they might be, they might lose their accreditation if we don't give them the books. So if you look at, 1, 2, 3, the fourth way as, you can see what I'm talking about. And also look at the fifth one, and we certainly don't want, none of our schools not accredited. So I'm urging all of us to do this, to vote for this, this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Parr?
Can I just ask a question, Dr. Sharber, on this one?
Yes, address the chair, please.
Can I ask a question, Dr. Sharber, on this? Thanks. Just a question on this. What does the accreditation do for us? And then also, is it strictly just based on number of books? And have we checked our other schools to make sure that they've got however many volumes are needing to be accredited?
To be perfectly honest, I'm not sure accreditation does much for us, except that most people want their children to go to an accredited school. And I don't think we would want Williamson County to be seen as a district where our schools are not accredited. And possibly, it is possible that that might be a hindrance to children going to college in terms of receiving scholarships, that kind of thing. So I think, I just think we want to be accredited. But to be perfectly honest, other than that, it probably doesn't do a great deal. The accreditation does set up some standards. Probably in many places, without those particular standards, the school district wouldn't try to achieve better. But in Williamson County, I think the public here demands that we try to achieve better and have better standards. So probably we would do that without the accreditation standards. But people outside of Williamson County wouldn't know that. So this tells them that we're going to meet at least these minimal standards. And your second question?
Is it just based on strictly number of books, and have we checked our other schools?
It is based on a number of books, up to, it's like 10 volumes for up to 1,500 children. So once you get to that amount, no matter how many more children you have, you've still met that standard. We are putting together a list currently to give to the board in November to show, to demonstrate that we're okay everywhere else with the SACS standard. And I'll be glad to provide that to you as well. No problem.
Other questions? Commissioner Ford, please.
Thank you. Dr. Sharber had a question in Education Committee and hoped we'd have some more information by tonight. Is there anything we can do to lower this, this cost? This is a lot of money, half a million dollars for library books. Is there anything we can do to lower this cost? Whether it's, as we look across our other high schools, if, if they have more than the 15,000 that are necessary, is there any type of sharing that can go on, of moving books from one area to another? I know that up to 25% of the books can be electronic copies, according to the, the SACS guidelines. Have we looked at all of those things? Is there anything we can do to meet the accreditation standards? And also meet the, because I don't see anything on here about increasing the educational value to our kids. I see it all about educate, all about accreditation. And I think by the time you get to high school, most of the use of libraries is either through our county libraries or through online materials that they have access to at home. So I think that we're doing this, it looks like to me, to meet the accreditation standards. And is there anything we can do, whether it's electronic copies or sharing of books among our other high schools, that we can meet this without spending half a million dollars?
No.
So you guys have explored all of those avenues, everything?
Well, I'm not going to support, and maybe that doesn't matter whether I support it or not. I'm not going to support asking libraries to start sharing their books around, because if I'm going to be forced to give up 300 of my books, I'm going to give you the 300 very worst books I have. And I don't think that's fair for the schools to get the worst books. And when we have opened schools in the past, that's what we have experienced, because we forced people to share those books, and not that that was a bad thing, but that's what we've done, and that still didn't give us enough books. I, I can't tell you that there's not some high school library that doesn't have too many books, but they're not going to share their best, I don't think. And I don't think that would be the right thing to do to Ravenwood and Independence. We have set a standard across the county of opening new schools with new things. We share things. We make people share PTO money. We make people share supplies across the, the schools. When we open a new school, if we're going to lose enough children, I'm not sure we can do that in this Spring Hill area when we open the school, because we're not going to have that many fewer children in any of those schools, unfortunately. But I just don't think that's the right thing to do. I, I know we have explored the electronic libraries and the library books, but I, I do think you're wrong in saying that the majority of our students don't really use our high school libraries. I think many of our students do take advantage of research at home, but I do think our students use our libraries. And if, if that's true, I don't know if people even use the public libraries, but I think they do. I think people still do use libraries, and they do still check out books, and they still do use some printed reference materials.
I've just seen, I know at elementary level, they use the books all the time, and as, as my experience is, they tend to, the use of the school libraries, in-school libraries, and checking out those books tends to go down grade by grade. So that's why I'm asking, is can we meet the standards, give them a good library, but do it at less than half a million dollars? And I just want to make sure that we've explored everything. I'm not expecting that anybody has a substandard library. I'm not saying that we don't give Independence and Ravenwood good libraries. I'm saying, are there ways to lower this half a million dollars? Because, you know, we've got millions and millions and millions of dollars, and I think that we need to look for everything we can do to save money where we can.
And, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree with that, but even at 1,500, that's up to 1,500 children. So that's 10 volumes of something. And generally, like Franklin High right now has 1,800 children in it. At some point, probably all our high schools will have 2,000 children in it. So we're not really funding or setting up the libraries for every child to have what they're supposed to have anyway.
Until we see your list, we don't know what levels they're at, right?
Oh, the other libraries?
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Dr. Sharber. I don't want to go way, way back, but I can remember the times when schools were given old books that other students had used, with all kinds of names and marks and things in there. So I don't want to go that route. But I do agree with her that you're not going to send your very best books, you know, I'm not going to send you my best books. I'm going to send you some old books and things. I don't care how much I love you and all that, but I'm not going to do that. And then there are some children who cannot get to the public library, so they have to go to the school library. And then we talk about books, children read, they get them out of the library, and they take them home, and it keeps them off the street. And I'm, that's what I am totally interested in, keeping children off the street. And if they can get a good book out of the library, whether it's just fiction or something for fun, you know, for them to read, that's what I would do. And I, I think this is the best money that we can spend, to buy books, to keep us accredited. Because I don't have little children now. I don't want to have the high school children, but I certainly would not want my children to go to a school that was not accredited. And anybody who's coming into this community, they want accredited schools. And that's why they come here, because they look at our school system, and they say it's one of the best school systems that they have. And you better believe they're looking to see if it's accredited. And colleges are not going to take you unless you are accredited, coming from an accredited school.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to address Resolution 10-6-3? I see none. It's up for consideration on the voting machine. If you're in favor, press yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
21 yes.
21 yes, 0 no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 10-06-4, resolution amending the 2006, '07 County Commission budget by $5,644 for costs of voting machine maintenance. Revenue to come from general fund, undesignated fund balance. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Motion made and seconded. Budget Committee report, Commissioner Lynch?
Budget Committee recommends approval of 5, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
The extended maintenance warranty, time has passed, and it appears to be advantageous to continue that maintenance agreement with the company to maintain the voting machines we have at the present time.
Any other discussion of Mr. Green on this resolution? I will add from the chair that this machine is used by everybody in the county. The Planning Commission, School Board, all sorts of bodies that meet in here. And of course, we fund, we bought it, we funded it, and we're maintaining it. So we're doing that for all of county use. Commissioner Smith?
My question was answered. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Other questions on this resolution? I see none. 10-06-4 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
21 yes.
Resolution is unanimously adopted. 21 yes, 0 no. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2006, '07 General Sessions budget by $2,170. Revenues to come from probation fees. Commissioner Shalfon's not here. Who's, somebody else on the Law Enforcement Committee?
Move for approval.
Motion made and seconded to get this on the floor. Law Enforcement Committee report? Who's vice? Okay. So it passed unanimous. Let's check, if we would, let's check the minutes of those committee meetings to confirm unanimous approval. And we can put that in. I think it's probably 6, 0, if I'm remembering. But if we could, let's check that to make sure that's accurate. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee recommends approval of 5, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Explanation from someone on the Law Enforcement Committee. Who's Vice Chair of Law Enforcement? Commissioner Smith?
This resolution provides for expenses that are exceeding the budget for, for evaluation of drug testing. It's going to be paid for through probation fees to offset the expense, so, so no, no additional funds outside.
Thank you, sir. Any, any questions on Resolution 10-6-5? I see none. If you're in favor of 10-6-5, press yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please. 21 yes, 0 no. Resolution 10-6-5 unanimously adopted. Resolution 10-6-6, resolution of an intent to fund an amount not to exceed $3 million for the construction of a new south branch of the Williamson County Public Library System to be located in the town of Thompson Station. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Library Board of Trustees report?
7, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Property Committee?
6, 5, 0 against.
Thank you, sir. Budget Committee?
Recommend approval of 5, 4, 0 against.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Barnwell, explanation, please, sir.
Yes, this, several months ago, we talked about moving, allowing us due diligence on another piece of property. And I'd mentioned the fact that there was a primo one coming along, and it has arrived. It's a fantastic site. It'll be beautiful for this library. It's upwards, it's a gift of upwards of 12 acres. Right on Thompson Station Road, right near Buckner Lane. I think it's an ideal location. Due diligence has been performed. We're still waiting for the results of the exam. And with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Commissioner Hayes.
Yes, the other, other sponsors of this resolution, I'd like to recognize and allow them to speak if they'd like. Commissioner Hayes, Lynch, Hancock and Hester. Commissioner Hayes first, please.
We're very excited about this prospect. As Commissioner Barnwell said, we had looked at another piece, but we came back to you and asked for the option of going to look at an additional piece for due diligence. This area is, is much preferred. It's approximately 12 acres. It is accessible from Thompson Station Road, from Crites Lane, from Columbia Pike, from Lewisburg Pike, Pental Road, and Clayton Arnold Road, as well as Buckner Lane. It sits on a pretty grassy field. In the, the back of it will be a passive park, part of a development, who probably will even have a walking trail to the library. We believe that it will be a benefit to all the residents of the south end of the county and be a real credit, as to follow up on what Commissioner Mills said. Everyone needs to be exposed to libraries and library books. And I think that if you have any child that you've ever seen progress through school, if they've been exposed to libraries, they do much better in school. And you can see there are still children in our area who are not exposed to books, and I hope we can rectify that. As of now, there are about 5,500 borrowers who are Thompson Station, Spring Hills, south end of the county residents. They have borrowed about 55,000 circulations over this last year. We do know from what we've already heard tonight that the growth is already there. In fact, the library evaluation in 1998, as far back as that, identified the Thompson Station area as in great need of a library source. We believe this is an area that will grow into a regional complex. We believe the growth there will rival the growth in Franklin, and we certainly wish and ask for your support. It will be benefit to every resident in the south end of the county. We want to have a public meeting where we can get input from the public as to what do they want in this approximately $15,000, $15,000 square foot building. And we have already heard from some that they would like some of the outside area to be beautiful gardens and environmentally native grasses. We may even look toward doing a, maybe a classroom, outdoor classroom with some of the friends. There could be a place for astronomy and astrology, and there could be so many possibilities there. But primarily, it will be a green, open space with a magnificent library for all the residents who care to use it. And I ask for your support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Commissioner Hester, you're one of the sponsors.
I just wanted to thank Commissioner Hayes for her work on this project, and I, I would like to continue the association that we have with the city of Thompson Station in a cooperative, communicative matter, not only on libraries, but roads and other infrastructure. But I, I think that this property is quite, is, is, as Commissioner Hayes said, is quite attractive, and it would be used by the community.
Thank you. Commissioner Hancock?
I'm certainly in favor of this, and I'd like to again voice a thanks to Commissioner Hayes for putting this package together with the donors of the property. And I'd also like to thank Commissioner Barn, uh, Barnwell, Commissioner Green, and the library folks that we asked for more time about six months ago. And I think by them being patient and working with us and through us, and with their leadership, Commissioner Green, Commissioner Barnwell, we, we've got a much better product.
Thank you, sir.
Totally in favor of it.
Mr. Green?
Now, going back to the 1998 study, this was recommended, and I know there was some reluctance at that time for us to move in Spring Hill, Thompson Station area. And basically, it was Bethesda, that we kind of, you know, kind of pulled the reins back a little bit, because those people in Bethesda loved the Bethesda Library. So we, we, now that the growth has occurred in the Thompson Station, Spring Hill area, we think it's an opportunity. Because, I don't want to be speaking out of turn, but I think a lot of those Bethesda people are now going to Spring Hill and Thompson Station to buy their groceries and what have you, so they'll be going by the library anyway. So I think this is a good location, and it's a good opportunity. I support you. Thank you.
Commissioner Lynch?
I'm glad all the others spoke behind Ms. Hayes, so I didn't have to follow her. That's the hard act. I, I would just say that these people down here really need a library, and I'd like to thank Mary Jackson. She's been a wonderful mayor down there for Spring Hill, and we're going to lose, and I sure hate that. But she's always worked well with Williamson County, and I appreciate that, but we really need that library.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Parr? Thank you, sir. Commissioner Parr?
I do support the library. The one problem I have, though, and I'm glad that you guys got the property donated. I think that's great. The only thing is, it's $3 million and 15,000 square feet, which comes out to exactly $200 a square foot, and I think the issue I would have with it is just simply that you've got so many ideas right now. I think it would be much better to fund the architectural fees, develop all these ideas, and then find out exactly how much it's going to cost, because as we just heard, the Spring Hill Rec Center might run over what we approved, and I just think it would be much better to get the funding in place, get the architectural fees, get all the ideas laid out, and then try to get a more concrete plan, so we know exactly what we need and what it's going to cost, because maybe it's more than the $3 million, maybe it's less, but I think it'd be much better to get the architectural fees approved now and move ahead, and I don't really see that it would delay the project since you still have to go through those processes anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Greer?
I don't question the need for the library. I am concerned about the money that we're borrowing on top of the $25 million we just approved for these two schools. I don't think we can continue to spend more than we have. Thank you.
Okay, on this resolution, too, I made myself a note and forgot to announce it. The Williamson County Commission three fiscal impact statement was not attached to this resolution when it was initially filed. That's a requirement of our rules unless we have any objection to that, so is any objection to adding this schedule that's behind this? It was not filed, the impact statement filed when the resolution was filed. Does anybody object to hearing this, as this didn't follow the rules? Any objections? No objections, so we'll add this three-year fiscal impact statement to this. Any further discussion on this resolution? Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to make the comment that as the design is flushed out, that they look at innovative, energy-efficient design considerations on this site. It looks like from the math that Commissioner Barnwell has, it's a beautiful piece of property. I think he, hopefully, they will be able to maintain as many of the trees on the property as possible, plant more trees if need be, but let's look at the long-term value of a building that we're investing money in and try to make it as efficient as possible.
Thank you, ma'am. Other discussion? Commissioner Ford?
Very much, Mr. Chairman. I think we had in the Property Committee last year when we were talking about the other piece of property, we saw a number that was closer four to five million, some number that was larger than this number, and I just want to ask the question, I don't know if that ever made it to the Commission floor or not, but I think we saw a much larger number in the Property Committee. I'd just like to ask the question is, are we scrimping here? Have we cut back on, on items here, or is this $3 million really going to do it, or are we expecting to see another addition to this $3 million at some point?
Commissioner Barn?
If somebody could address the difference in, in what we saw then versus what we see now.
Commissioner Barnwell, I'll direct that to you, please, sir.
Yes, the, the $5 million number I thought was way high, and it was based on the, the fact that we would have to go up, we would have to design and build for a second story out that particular property, and which we didn't want to do to begin with, and that's a lot of extra costs involved with that, but I thought the, the cost estimate was a wee bit high for what we're going to get.
So just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Go ahead.
We, we're not cutting back on anything here. We're, we're going to get a building that is as functional and as user-friendly and as energy-efficient and all of those things as we were going to get for the $5 million, but we're going to get that for a total of $3 million here.
Right. The $5 million was rejected even by the Library Board of Trustees as a, as a doable project.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're, you know, if we're going to build something, let's build something.
Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Chairman, just a question about current year property tax revenue per, on a penny of property tax, given the $234,000 annual debt service required on these bonds. Do, do you have that number, or does, could we get that number?
Mr. Budget Chairman Coleman, please. Mr. Budget Director, not Budget Chairman, but I promoted you.
I'll say that's kind of the curveball, because I don't have that with me, but Commissioner Smith, we're in excess of a half million dollars per penny in the County General Fund and in the County General Debt Service Fund. Both of those would be in excess of a half million dollars per penny. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to address this resolution that's not spoken? Back to you, Commissioner Hayes.
I just wanted, in response to Commissioner Ford, to say, this is just the building. This does not, does not include the library books in the building. We hope that, that they will be coming from a multitude of sources, including grants, money, grants, friends of library, hopefully some of the municipalities will contribute as well as us looking again. And we do know that in looking at the cost estimate, we estimated what per square foot footage was for schools, and we went at that estimate, but in the planning, if we know going in what we have to spend, we can look at it very carefully, and as you well know, when we set a fee out there, no matter how much or how little, the bids never come in much lower. They, they go for the high figure. So we plan to watch it all the way through. There is a building committee that will be assigned to watch everything, and we, we promise to do that.
Thank you, ma'am. Other comments, questions before we vote? I see no questions. Resolution 10-6-6 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted that wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
21 yes, one abstention.
21 yes and one abstention. Okay. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 10-06-7, resolution of intent to fund an amount not to exceed $2 million to provide for the purchase and installation of a centralized air conditioning system at the Williamson County Agricultural Exposition Park. Revenues to come from an upcoming bond issue. Commissioner Bane?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Let's see. Property Committee report?
Property Committee, six in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee recommend approval of five, far, zero against.
Once again, the three-year fiscal impact statement was not filed with this resolution when it was filed. Is there any objection from any Commissioner to adding this three-year fiscal impact statement to the back of this resolution as an attachment and go ahead and hear this resolution tonight? Is there any objection? I see no objection, so we'll proceed with an explanation. Commissioner Bane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Expo Center, as, as most everyone here knows, is now scheduled for five graduations this year. We have had people approach us that would like to use the facility, but because it's not air-conditioned, they don't feel it's appropriate for holding their, their events, trade shows, entertainment venues. We now use it for the county fair. We use it for the Franklin Rotary, rodeo, number of, of uses. It's one of those situations, and I'm sure those of you who were here recall it well, where we felt we couldn't do it when the building was built. Here it is five years later, and it's, it's time to do it. I've talked to, to a number of people in my district, and I've yet to find anyone who was opposed to air conditioning that building, so I would like to see us move ahead and do that.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, discussion on Resolution 10-6-7? Any questions? Ready to vote? Resolution 10-6-7 is up for consideration. If you're in favor of Resolution 10-06-7, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted that wished to vote? Court of vote, please. Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number 10-6-8, resolution amending the 2006-7 Highway Department budget and appropriating up to $450,000 for highway equipment purchases. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. The Highway Commission passed this. Five unanimously yes, four, zero against. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee recommend approval of five, far, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Hancock, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the county's reached a point in the evolution of paving subdivisions in roads and streets that when they go back to redo the surfaces, they have to grind off several inches of what's there, the worn-out surface, in order to give the proper crown to the roads, to make the roads drain and to make them work. A perfect example is Temple Road, which will, they will be doing sometime in the next few months. If they had to have this milling contracted out, it would be over $90,000, just, just for Temple Road, the two-lane, the four-lane section that goes through Temple Hills, and that's one example. They can also use this milling material that they grind off of the roads. They can use it to fill potholes, and when they dig bad spots out of roads and highways, they can use it to put back in. It also has the potential of having trade-in value to the people that we purchased hot mix from when we paved the roads and streets. So this is a, a win-win situation. This is moving on to, and giving them the equipment, or getting the equipment that they need to actually perform their duties in a, in a very economical way, and it's, you might well denote that it's being funded out of fund balance.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions? Commissioner Hayes?
I just want to request it be worked on Evergreen Road before we fall off and kill ourselves.
Other, other comments, questions? Commissioner Green?
It was basically my comment, put it in better terms than what I was going to, but no, if it can alleviate that edge of the road where we continually pave and raise the road, and we had many accidents in this county where people dropped off the edge, tried to come back on, ended up on the opposite side of the road and have a situation. If it can alleviate some of those in the process, what, what, all the other benefits, if you ever drop off the edge of the road and try and come back, it's kind of scary, but if it alleviates some of that, I, I'm definitely in favor of this.
Thank you, sir. Other comments? See none. 10-6-8 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted that wished to vote? Court of vote, please. Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 10-6-9, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a quitclaim deed and other related documents to complete deed corrections for the real property commonly referred to as the Five Points Post Office. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Property Committee report?
Six in favor of, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, far, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is basically just an adjustment to a property line that goes all the way back, I think, to when the federal government paved the, the lot at the post office at Five Points, and what this, what this will do is actually clean up that property line so that as we move down the road, everyone knows exactly where the line is and everyone's happy with it. The mayor's worked this out with the property owner, and I've talked, spoke with both of them. They're both in agreement.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Commissioner Hayes?
Just want to thank Ms. Tyree for being interested in working this out. She's here tonight. We do appreciate it.
Thank you, Margie, for being here. Any questions? Anyone on this resolution? See none? If you're in favor of Resolution 10-6-9, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted that wished to vote? Court of vote, please. Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 10-6-10, resolution declaring certain property as surplus property and authorizing sealed bids for the sale of certain property owned by Williamson County. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Property Committee report?
Six in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, far, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that this is some, some old law books and what have you that was in one of the offices, law offices, that is no longer used down, down in the courthouse or old courthouse, I'm not real sure, and this will just give the, the mayor the official authority to put these up and sell them at auction and, and clear them out.
For, for clarification, Mr. Hancock from the chair, that's the old law library?
Right.
Was downstairs, so it's no longer needed, and so this will declare it surplus and we'll get rid of it. We've also notified all departments that there's shelving that could potentially be available there, if they're interested to see Mr. Ritter or follow the process for that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll use as much of it as we can. Other questions? See none. 10-6-10 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted that wished to vote? Court of vote, please. 21 yes, zero no. Resolution 10-6-11, resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute an agreement as well as other related documents with the city of Franklin for the exchange of real property. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Property Committee?
Six in favor of, zero against.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, far, zero against.
And is there an amendment that's being offered to this? Okay, Mr. Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, the amendment is basically the same attachment A, other than at the city of Franklin, instead of saying the Old Springs property. You should have a copy of this amendment on your desk. It says the real property parcel is commonly referred to as the Old Springs property.
Okay. That's a proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to amend Resolution 10-6-11 with the attachment A that makes the amendment that Commissioner Barnwell has talked about under Section B, commonly referred to as the Old Springs property located within Williamson County. That's the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, the maker of the motion endorses the amendment.
Thank you, sir. Further discussion on the amendment? The amendment is loaded on a machine. If you're in favor of the amendment, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Court of vote, please. 21 yes, zero no on the amendment, so now we're voting on Resolution 10-6-11 as amended with the new wording. Any discussion on this motion as amended? Commissioner Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm certainly in favor of this, but I'm wondering whether these descriptions are legal enough. They, they sound like they're 200 years old and not very legal, and I have a second part, second question as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I can?
Go ahead. Answer the first part, please.
They're probably not legal in what you're saying, and, and the property lines are, are going to be a real challenge for us to do a survey on, but we both agree, I say both, the city, the city's going to have to vote on this at their automatic meeting, but they're in conjunction with the property swap as we are there. Our, our boundaries can be easily defined, but the spring property's going to take a real challenge for us, and that's, in fact, we're probably as much as 25 to 50 acres off because that line keeps moving, but it is all of that property at the Springs.
Is that the reason why the acreage was dropped off?
It's actually gone up, if you'll look from the original. Now, we've done it, we've done a deed search. We've had SAD to do that. It came back at, at more acreage than what we've got, because a lot of this parcel of land is many, many, many years old. It goes to the big oak tree that's no longer standing there, and it's going to be a real challenge, but it is all of the Springs parcel of land out there. We can do a, a, a search, but it's going to take some time to find those trees and pins and landmarks.
I have a second question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Do we have a plan for the property?
Mr. Chairman, in, in the long run, I've tried to answer that very openly. That, that area out there, the many acres that it's involved, will make a wonderful opportunity for us to preserve and protect, something that is, is very near and dear to my heart. This is a project that's been going on for well over two years. It took some legislative action at the Nashville level for us to be able to exchange this. Prior to this time, we would have had to declare the property surplus and get in a bidding war, and we wouldn't have won. This allows won. This allows us to exchange between the city and the county with your approval, and then the city's doing it at their appropriate meeting. Long range, I would like to see that preserved. It's a very passive park, possibly, certainly walking trails would be, and equestrian. There are so many ideas that it almost baffles the mind in which one could attempt. You will not see, I guess would be an easier thing, you will not see through my direction anyway. You all may change my mind on it, but I don't plan to put a bunch of lights out there, turn it into ball fields or anything like that. You look at that whole area out there, Leapers Fork and Hillsburg, Garrison Road, all the way down to the county line. We just don't have anything left in this county like that. And I'm not trying to sell you on the concept. I wish I could take all of you up in a helicopter or a plane and really see the beauty and the majesty of this acreage out there. I could even see if we could get it through proper channels, do some damming up out there. There's a lot of water that's still out there. And present that as an alternative for some springs, for parks. And the idea is, I mean, the idea is to preserve it. If I'm going to come to you today and say, "I've got money to preserve it," the answer is no. And, but I envision over the next 10 years, five to 10 years, that we get some traction going on this. We've got very capable men and women here in our departments that can handle this. I would expect forming a task committee of getting some people together to help us develop that land and take the best uses that we possibly can. I expect that we'll go to Washington and try to get some federal money up there, but...
Almost guaranteed.
I guarantee it. And, you know, you guys, you ladies and gentlemen here are the first step in this journey. And I hope Franklin continues on with this journey. I know there's a lot of interest in our community for this project.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, can you?
Go ahead. Follow.
Would it be appropriate, and perhaps we should address this to legal counsel, to add an amendment to this indicating our intent to keep this as a passive area?
Oh, I think you're going to say it's going to stay passive. I can't imagine...
But this doesn't address that. We've had other plans that haven't ended up the way we wanted them years ago.
I'll let the legal people do that.
Heard the question, counsel?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This resolution right now does not do anything but permit us to swap the property. Should you all would like to come back later and state that you would like to use this for a passive park, you can do that. Pitting it on this document, I'm not sure how much effect that would actually have, since it's just authorizing us to swap it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Perry?
I am in favor of this. Can I ask the mayor a question, Chairman?
Go ahead.
Just to clarify on the old jail, the old, old jail, there's not going to be any timeframe that the schools have to leave that, is there? Because in the paper, it kind of indicated they had a kind of a set period of time, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that up. I meant to touch on that. In meeting with Mayor Franklin and the city manager, and I have already talked to the schools about it, the property on Bridge Street where our school maintenance is at, and we refer to it as the old, old jails, et cetera, no, the paper did indicate it. Well, I think it was a couple of years, if that's what it said. But Mayor Miller has indicated to me in a very timely fashion, he's not going to kick them out and run them out down there. And for those people that are concerned about the property up off of Eddie Lane, which was the old 4-H barn up in that area, we, two or three years ago, you all approved the lease with Crossland Supply, and they've been paying us on a monthly basis. The city's going to continue to work with them. We've relayed that message to Mr. Davis there at Crossland. The piece of property at Five Points, the post office, the mayor, Franklin, is not interested in closing the post office. They want to leave it as a viable, strong part of the community here in Franklin. And there are some steps being made. I know there's some very interested parties here in Franklin to enhance that building for maybe a visitor center, a welcome center somewhere downtown, which I think is the right thing for Franklin to do, not necessarily the county to do. And then the other issue that you will find, we still have a lot of files and old merchandise down in the bottom of the old Five Points post office, and we'll be, Al Ritter, our property manager, will be working over that over a period of time. And all this does not have to be done in a, you know, expeditious manner. We've been given the green light to stay there and work through these issues. Thank you for the chance. Let me explain that.
And the maintenance department is in the old jail.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I applaud your efforts in the city of Franklin. I think that they're going to do a wonderful job of preservation of the buildings that are in their midst. And I think that we are certainly of a mindset to have a plan for conservation for the Springs property. I would say two things. It seems to me that we ought to have a survey done, and is it possible that the city might pay for it? Just a thought. And then I think we obviously need a plan for conservation. We need a professional to actually document what we have out there, because it is very unique. And that should be part of the process. Thank you.
Commissioner, if I can, Mr. Chairman, and once the property exchanges hands with the green light, then we will have to do the survey and do all of that. And you're exactly right.
Our job...
Our job just begins.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayes?
I think that the bodies who designed and thought of Radnor Park and Edwin and Percy Warner probably faced many of the same things that we were thinking about tonight is the conservation. I see this as our conservation legacy. And I applaud you, the mayor, Mr. Mayor, and everyone for thinking of this. And let's do go on and preserve this area from development.
Thank you. Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I agree with Commissioner Hayes, Commissioner Brockman, Commissioner Davis. I think we can look back and look at what Edwin Park, Warner Park has done, not only for that area right there, but that entire region of Nashville and northern Williamson County. It's set a stage. This is a vision that many people have had in identifying this. And this will be something, if we do it, that your grandchildren will look back on and say, "I'm glad Red Danny and Grandmama done this," when they go out and enjoy the Springs. So I applaud you for supporting this.
Commissioner Hester?
Thank you, sir. This land also represents a valuable resource. It was, as I'm sure everyone in this room is aware, it was the former water source for the city of Franklin. Many of my constituents who live in this area and Commissioner Hancock's constituents rely on well water and actually springs for their water source. So it's, I think it's very important in preservation of this resource. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from any other Commissioner? I would just like if you would permit me from the chair to say that this is a major piece of property in that section, and I would encourage the mayor in working with all the folks that are at our disposal to seek federal funds. I see Mr. Aubrey Preston in the audience, and Aubrey is very well connected with the folks at the state, so we should seek out state funds and any funds available to assist this county in protecting one of the greatest undeveloped assets that exist in this entire county. And Aubrey, thank you for your help, and we hope we can continue to lean on you for assistance with that. Anything else before we vote on Resolution 10-6-11? I see none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please. Twenty, yes. Commissioner Walton is out, so twenty, yes, unanimous vote with Walton out. Resolution 10-6-11, just done that one, 10-6-12, resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to enter into a lease agreement with D9 Development concerning vacant property on Second Avenue and Bridge Street. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Motion made and seconded. Property Committee report?
Property Committee is six, zero, as amended.
Budget Committee report?
By far, zero against.
Thank you. Commissioner Hancock, would you explain the amendment, please?
And the third whereas after parking lot to include as well as other improvements included in the lease agreement.
Thank you, sir. So...
I moved to amended.
Is there a second? Commissioner Barnwell is second on the amendment to add in the third whereas after parking lot to include as well as other improvements included in the lease agreement. Commissioner Barnwell, I know you've been very close to this, because this is impacting the Clay Center.
I'd like to yield to Commissioner Barnwell for presentation.
Commissioner Hancock yields to Commissioner Barnwell for an explanation.
Yes, this is a piece of property that the county owns at the corner of Second and Bridge Street that is currently unpaved. Right next to this property is Short Park, which is a portion of the JL Clay Center. The JL Clay Center is a facility owned by the county, but it's a senior citizen center for our Franklin residents. The park is a very nice park. It's used a lot. One of the problems we have is we're dealing with senior citizens, with people with special needs, and an unpaved parking lot that serves this area is a little sometimes hazardous for these people. Mr. Butler has stepped forward to, he needs some, he needs to show some additional parking for a project he's doing with the city of Franklin. He doesn't believe he's ever going to use it. But what he's going to do to have this as part of his parking places is pave this lot for us, put our handicap things on there, make sure we have handicap parking. And generally, just being a good citizen to the county and to the JL Clay Center. And I recommend approval.
Thank you, sir. Questions on this resolution? I see none. 10-6-12 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. This is as amended. We've already amended it. We're voting on the amended motion, 10-6-12. Okay? You ready to vote? Press the yes button. Oppose, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please. Twenty-one, yes. Resolution unanimously adopted, as amended where we did add the fence. So Resolution 10-6-13, resolution to adopt Tennessee Code Annotated Section 40, 14 to 10, implementing court charges for defraying costs of representing indigent defendants. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Law Enforcement Committee?
Seven, zero in favor.
Tax Study? One, four, three against. Budget Committee?
Five, far, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Smith?
State of Tennessee has passed legislation allowing for an implementation of court charges that will go to defray the expenses of a public defender's office locally. That office is located here in Franklin. They are paid by the state for their personal work, but they are not provided sufficient funds by the state for resources, law books, computers, office supplies, those sorts of things. The money collected from cases in the court would be remitted to their association in Nashville in a fund held for the benefit of this office here in Franklin, in Williamson County. They do work in a couple of other counties, but their office is here, and the predominant amount of their work is here. And what this would do is use those court fees to allow them to better do their work by providing the kind of supplies that they need as legal professionals.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions? Commissioner Smith on 10-6-13? Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My curiosity question is, we're sending this money to a state agency or state-funded or state program. Does it come back to this community dollar for dollar? Do they make an allocation? Or do we, you know, eventually they say, "Well, you're Williamson County. You can afford it. We're not going to send it back to you."
Mr. Chairman, it does remain for the benefit of this office. All the dollars do. They have an association, much like the district attorneys have, that handle those sorts of things. Monies are not handled by the local public defender's office. That's the purpose of this association in Nashville. And what the local office has to do is to account for, they make a request for what they need and account for the cost of that. And then those things will be provided from that office in Nashville. So the monies are accounted for.
Thank you, sir. Other questions? Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just wondering what the opposition to this was from the tax study committee. I don't see the negative side, but there must be one. Is there anyone, could I address that to members of the tax study committee?
Commissioner Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the time, I was one of the ones that voted against it. It was felt that the money would be applied to the citizens of Williamson County and spent in other counties in this judicial district. In further study and talking with legal counsel and several things, I support this resolution now for finding that out because it, yeah, although they defend, all the monies will stay here in Williamson County.
Thank you, Commissioner Walton. Answer your question. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you.
Other questions on this resolution? I see none. Resolution 10-6-13 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please.
Nineteen, yes, two, no.
Nineteen, yes, and two, no. So the resolution does pass with Commissioners Jones and Hancock voting no. I'm also informed, I need to back up to Resolution Number 10-6-12, the amendment that Commissioner Barnwell made to the motion. We never voted on the amendment, so if we could, let's back up just a second. So you heard the amendment offered by Commissioner Barnwell to add the attachment, the definition of, in the third whereas after parking lot to include as well as other improvements included in the lease agreement. You heard that motion and seconded. All in favor of that amendment, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. So that amendment was adopted unanimous, and then the vote on the actual resolution itself was unanimous. So if we could, record that in a minute, please. Resolution 10-6-14, resolution to repeal Resolution 11-00, 11-00-2, and to levy an additional litigation tax in Williamson County to retire the debt for the construction of the county jail and the Williamson County Judicial Center, including any extension thereof. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Motion is made and seconded. This was reviewed. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee recommends approval. Five, far, zero against.
Thank you. Tax Study Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
This was the item that we learned about at the C-Tech dinner when we all went to Nashville and had the wonderful program and dinner provided by them. We found out that, of course, as we know, that the resolution earlier had provided for a $10 tax on criminal cases. But we found out that the state law now provided on the public acts for there to be a $10 fee on local litigation. That simply means that the users are paying. That money can be used for construction of the county jail, for the judicial center, and other extensions like that. So those who are using it will have an opportunity to pay for using it. And I think it's a great, great thing for us to do. And it was good that we went and found out this was a source of revenue that we did not know was available.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Perry? Commissioner Parrish?
I do support this. I just have one clarification I wanted Bobby to address, if I could, Chairman? It's in regard to if this applies to people that don't appear in court, that pay, just mail their ticket in, and we talked about it, and I'd just like you to clarify that.
Mr. Chairman, as Commissioner Parrish just stated, we did talk about this. I have looked up the statute on what this applies to, and he is correct. It will not apply, the way I read the statute, to people who pay their fine through the mail or their ticket through the mail.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hancock?
Call for a question.
Question being called for. All in favor of call for questions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question being called for. Resolution 10-614 is up for consideration. In favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted, wished to vote? Court of vote, please?
Twenty-one yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 10-615, resolution authorizing the Williams County Clerk's Office, the Trustee's Office, the Property Assessor's Office, and the Sheriff's Office to collect a $2 filing fee per document. Commissioner Walton?
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Tax Study Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, far, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Walton?
This is just as it says. It's a $2 filing fee, and the money goes for help, storage of files, maintenance, storing the files for future reference.
Any questions? Commissioner Walton? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 10-615, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wished to vote? Court of vote, please?
Twenty-one yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 10-616, resolution authorizing the Williams County mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with HB and TS concerning the construction of a telecommunications tower. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Property Committee report?
Six in favor of, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, far, zero against.
Explanation, please.
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that the mayor may have to help us some with this, but there's an agreement been negotiated, if we approve it, to place a tower on the Heritage site, which I'm assuming is the site down at Heritage. And that different agencies of the county will actually utilize this tower in order to, one thing, keep from proliferating towers everywhere, and another thing, to improve emergency communications with various agencies within our jurisdiction and maybe even others' jurisdiction also. And Mayor, if you would help me after that, that's about all I know about it.
You did great.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions of Mayor Anderson on this resolution? I see none. 10-616 is up for consideration. In favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wished to vote? Court of vote, please?
Twenty-one yes.
Twenty-one yes, zero no. Any other announcements before we conclude our session tonight? I'll entertain a motion, and we adjourn.
Some move.
All in favor, say aye. We're in adjournment at...
Mr. Chairman, we had one request that couldn't be heard over the...
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Go right ahead.
I just wanted to mention that the pancake breakfast is in Thompson Station this Saturday morning from 7 until 11 o'clock. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Brockman has had a revelation.
I did. Just wanted to announce this very special association that's coming to Middle Tennessee. They're coming to Nashville. It's the Land Trust Alliance. It's a national association that oversees all land trusts, thousands of which are in this country. The Land Trust for Tennessee is our local chapter, and they have field trips. It's from the 12th through the 15th. They're coming to Nashville, but they hold field trips, and four of the 12 are coming to Williamson County.
Very good. Anything else? Let's adjourn again. I'll entertain a motion. All in favor, say aye. We're in adjournment at 8:59.